Why don't we start? Okay, there we go. Uh, first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 3rd, 2021 Planning and Building Committee Meeting, and we'll start with a rule call. And just answer here if you're here. Councilmember Franch, here. Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Director Knutson.
Yeah.
Uh, Carl DeSimis.
Here.
Paul Rice.
Here.
Michelle Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Coon.
Here.
And Bob Larson.
Here.
I think I got everybody. Okay. Why don't we go on then to approval of the minutes from the April 5th, 2021 meeting? They should have been in the pocket that went out on this the other day. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I am.
Okay, great, now we can move on to the agenda items. Uh, first one is residential growth target discussion, and I'm assuming staff is going to be Carl DeSimis.
Correct, thank you, Councilmember Franch.
Take it away.
One second here to get my screen up. Can everybody see that okay?
Yeah.
It's, it's clear?
Can, can you blow it up slightly? Um, mine's got, mine's a little fuzzy. Fuzzy, yeah. Ah, there we go, okay, now I can see it, now I can read it.
Whoops, is that too far out?
That's too far out. Keep going in there, one, one more step and it'd be just about right for me. That's great, even with my reading glasses, that's, that's phenomenal.
Okay.
But I can't see the whole page.
All right. Uh, okay, so, uh, council members and mayor, what we've provided here today is a memo with some background information relative to the growth targets allocations that we've been working on over the past few months, uh, together with Pierce County and their consultant, HBL.
Could you scroll that up a little, please? Scroll it up, yeah.
This first document that I'm showing here is a, a new document that HBL had released that really provides background information relative to the progress that's gone on so far with the Pierce County growth targets, uh, and sort of where we've gotten to. So it's really good background information for the council to read through, uh, provides a little bit of background here, um, gives you, uh, an idea of who the players are from each of the regional geographies, uh, scrolling through high-capacity communities. Sorry, it's taking a minute to catch up here. And of course, we are the Cities and Towns Regional Geography, which is coming up next. And so you can see all of the cities that are involved in the Cities and Towns and who the contacts are there.
Uh, why is Roy and Russ not participating?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that, I'm not sure why they haven't been, um, why they haven't been showing up, um, but they haven't come to any of the meetings, and actually, a few of these folks haven't really come, Stillicum kind of came early on, uh, but I had, he hasn't shown up for a little while, South Prairie, Wilkerson, um, kind of the same ordering as well.
So, uh, but by not participating, that, that just means that they're not showing up to me, that doesn't mean they're out of the plan.
Oh, correct, that's correct, Councilmember Franch, yeah, they, so what will happen for them is that they're, they will just end up with a target, will be provided for them, that'll be that draft target that'll go off, uh, and then if they want to get involved after that time, then they could come back around and get involved.
Hey Carl, do you mind if I interrupt for a moment?
Certainly.
Just want to give the, the committee, uh, background, a little bit of background on the presentation and overview of what Carl's going to be talking about. So Carl's going to be going over the general process and a reminder of kind of how we got here, who's involved, et cetera, and then we will get into a memo that staff has prepared regarding specific residential growth targets for the city. And we were not able to get that memo out prior to this meeting today, which is why I sent an email to the committee today asking for an additional meeting on the 17th if there's additional questions. So I do apologize that that memo did not come out prior to the meeting, however, we do still think it's appropriate for Carl to go over the background information and then some of our justification regarding the 2044 growth target and annual growth rate that Carl will talk about. So just kind of wanted to break it down, we're going to give a little background information, then go into, uh, what we're looking at, and then what we will need from the committee moving forward.
Thanks, Katrina. Um, okay, so just continuing on, just scrolling through this document, and I wanted to present this document first just because it, um, if, when reviewing this for the 17th, um, this is probably as good a place to start as any, because it's going, what it, what you'll see is that it gets into the actual meetings down here and provides a quick summary of all of the meetings that have been conducted so far. And I wish it were a little bit faster.
Hey Carl, could, and I, I don't know, could you go down one click so it's all on one, one screen? Well, that's way too far.
All right.
So with Carl having it that big, if, um, anybody that's on the call, you can go to view options at the top of the screen, little black arrow, the area that says view options, if you click that and go to zoom ratio, you can either fit the size of your screen or go to 300%, you can kind of make it whatever size you need.
Oh, okay.
I'm just going to scroll down to the Cities and Towns, so you can just get an idea of all the meetings that have been held, so this gives a really good summary of each of the meetings that have been held, who was in attendance, uh, and what happened after the meeting, if there was any actions that took place after the meeting, just a really high-level summary, but at least, uh, gives, uh, council members an idea of what's going on so far. And at the end of this document is what I really wanted to get to, um, and that is the next steps section that HBL provided, and this is important because, uh, this final sentence in the first paragraph, and so there's, so in the past, we've discussed, um, this idea that we're sort of in a preliminary stage right now, trying to come up with, uh, really draft numbers, uh, that can be provided, uh, by HBL and the county to, uh, the Department of Commerce, because the department, the, the work is being done under a grant, and that grant has a, has a timeline associated with it, uh, by which time HBL has to have these draft numbers, uh, over to them, and so that, that comes up at the end of June. So, the reason I wanted to focus on this next step section is because it really, it, it does call it out as draft growth targets, uh, here, and I've actually been reaching out with, um, and talking with Pierce County about getting something a little bit more concrete than just this sentence, and so they're working with HBL to provide either an update to this memo itself, uh, that will be more concrete, or something in addition, uh, that will really spell out the fact that, yes, we're just, we're just meeting our mandate under this grant, and there will be opportunity for us to, to, uh, reanalyze, reassess, make changes, and work with the county to get those done.
Councilmember Franch, you got a question? Yes, so, uh, under the next steps in that first paragraph, for regional geographies that do not align with Vision 2050, what does that exactly mean?
Uh, so, that means if, if we are proposing a growth target that is completely out of alignment with the regional growth strategy, uh, then HBL would be reaching out, uh, to those communities and, uh, coming up with some support documentation, so there would be, uh, documentation that would go with the, find, the, the draft report that would go to Commerce to support those findings, to say that, uh, you know, maybe we feel like we're going to grow out of control over the next 10 years, so we want to reflect those numbers, yeah, in, as part of our draft allocation, or, or the opposite might be true. So, that's what they're referring to there, and, and, I, in our case, with the, with the Cities and Towns Regional Geography, if you'll recall, we were really overshooting the mark by a lot to begin with, it's, it's been sort of scaled back a bit, we're only over somewhere in the 38, 3,800 range, uh, and so, that is something that doesn't necessarily align with the Vision 2050, but is something that can likely be, uh, supported and justified, uh, and, and so this documentation would, would, um, accompany the draft report to sort of justify why that is.
What, what do you mean, we're over 3,800?
So, if you'll recall, there was, uh, in the allocations, and let me, let me just, uh, switch gears here and switch over to, to our memo. And scroll down, so if you'll recall, all of the regional geographies were, uh, provided a growth percentage, uh, and so in Pierce County, that growth percentage for the Cities and Towns geography was 18,535 people between 2020 and 2044. Right now, we're sitting, uh, about 3,500 or so over that 18,500 mark, between all, uh, amongst all of the cities, not just Gig Harbor, so I'm talking about the whole regional geography, so all 14 jurisdictions that are, that are within the Cities and Towns geography.
Well, I, 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 well, maybe, maybe I'll, I'll let you finish and I'll, I'll wind back to that, on that horizontal chart that was the one that I keep referring to for the last several meetings, I guess that's filled out now?
Um, no, it's not entirely filled out, uh, they, we've really kind of taken to using that as a, uh, just sort of a, a tool for coming up with the numbers at this point, so, you know, they've added in some of the, some of the other numbers, um, but they've moved, uh, on to the next stage, which is, uh, looking at the, looking how it affects, uh, housing units, and so there was another spreadsheet that was sent out that we've been, you, kind of using as a tool, and it, you know, it, what, both of those spreadsheets have really just become, uh, like I said, tools for us to plug and play with the numbers and figure out what works best for us as a jurisdiction, come back together with the regional geography, and then we look at the, the total, uh, and see if it's meeting up with this 18,535 or not.
Well, what, why would we want to, I mean, from my perspective, it's always better to not want to commit to too much, and, you know, if we go over, we go over, so why wouldn't we, if th- these Cities and Towns portion is 3,500 over, why don't we just lower our number?
Well, that's what everybody's been trying to do, is lower, lower their numbers, but everybody has to lower their numbers within reason, you know, so everybody's trying to sort of, um, curb that, curb that arc, uh, of growth, and so, but, you know, while at the same time, everybody has to recognize that they're going to grow, all jurisdictions are going to grow, and a lot of jurisdictions already have a lot of, uh, housing units in the pipeline that they have to account for, so it's, it's not as, it's not as easy, uh, as just lopping the number off, there has to be some justification for doing so.
Yeah, I, I, uh, yes, Mayor, Mayor Coon.
Yeah, I, I can see Jim's, um, concern, you know, um, so first thing of that graph you show, um, maybe I, I'm on page three of four of the staff memo, you've got the, you've got a realistic view of growth up to 2044, and, you know, like, taking on an extra 3, 3,600 people, but the next page, then you show 4,400 people, so which one is it?
Councilmember Heinz, if I, if I could recommend, if we can let Carl finish his presentation and go through kind of how we got there before we jump into the numbers, that would be great.
Okay, let's do that.
I want to recognize, I, I am concerned with, uh, you know, we're, we're already exceeding what the numbers will be by the 2030, and so if we do show that, I'd rather, I'd rather lower it and then hit it than have it high, and then builders come in and say, "Well, you've already anticipated this and welcomed it with full arms." Um, I'm getting, I'm concerned about density cut-ups in our, in our town, so, but we'll address that later.
Yeah, well, let's address that, right, yeah, I'm, I think, I think we're, we're, most of us are, I think, on the same page on this issue, and, uh, that was my, um, memo to you, Carl and Katrina, on the, uh, PCRC meeting, I brought up this issue big time, um, the, the super growth thing, so let's defer it for right now and go through what Carl has, and then we'll open it up to a discussion on that item.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I may, um, be lower my hand, be, I think some of the important takeaways from what Carl has stated so far is that there was a question earlier in the process of why are we rushing to get growth targets now ahead of the buildable lands report, uh, and, and in advance of when we would typically go through this process, and Carl has answered that for us, Pierce County received a grant from the Department of Commerce to conduct this work, and the product for the consultant is due by June 30th of 2021, so that's why we are on this accelerated timeframe, making decisions prior to having the, and all of the necessary information. Um, I think that something, just a plant to seed here, the, the true base year for the planning horizon will be 2024, so 20-year planning horizon from 2024 to 2044, however, currently on all of the analysis that we're utilizing, we have data for 2020, uh, so any numbers that we come up with will have to be amended when we go forward with the comprehensive plan update, because again, the true base year is 2024, but we're utilizing 2020 as our base currently, so we'll have to bring that up to speed, so there's, you know, three years of change that could happen between now and then, and that's important to remember. Uh, two, with the regional geographies, the, the caveat that was in the HBL memo, re- recall, there's one of the, uh, regional geographies that is not wanting to get anywhere close to accommodating the amount of growth that they need to, and there's others, um, like ours that are a little bit over, so I think that that, and I know Carl doesn't have it on the screen right now, but I think that that was the, you know, the caveat for the draft numbers. Um, and getting into a little bit, not too much of what the mayor, um, just said, and we don't want to skip too far into Carl's memo, but, you know, the previous growth rate was an average of, I think, 2.8 or 2.9% that got up to 5.9% annual growth rate between the year 2014 to 2020, what you'll see in this memo from staff is a much more realistic, dialed-down approach to growth, uh, you won't see us saying no growth, uh, that there'll be zero, we do need to take into account the pipeline that we have accommodated for, and we'll show you in this memo, but we also need to accommodate our vacant, underutilized parcels, um, because we don't want to get into a case like where we are now, and again, Carl in his memo describes, you know, we were supposed to grow by 3,000 people, and we ended up growing over 6,000, and there's a lot of reasons why, but one of the reasons for that is that our capacity was not adequately calculated in the previous effort, so what Carl and I are trying to do is, with the information that we have available to us, guide us through a growth process that allows us to accommodate the growth for our share, but not go over, uh, and again, Carl will go through all of that in just a little bit. One of the things that will be interesting post this process, noting that there's a deliverable to the state on June 30th of this year, is something that is going to get to be seen, how we're going to come back from the pandemic. The, and I'm talking in general planning, demo- demographic terms, Vision 2040 was a drastic change, or 2050 was a drastic change in the regional growth strategy to accommodate a significantly higher amount of population in our metro cities of Proerton, Everett, Tacoma, and Seattle. Through the pandemic, we are seeing initial, uh, demographic trends of net migration from, uh, metro areas out into the outlying areas, it is yet to be seen, uh, the effects of these on comprehensive plans, or if that is going to shift Vision 2050. My guess currently is that it will, we're seeing a lot more telecommuting, we're seeing a lot more, um, people wanting to live somewhere more affordable, they can't necessarily live in Seattle near their job, and if they can do so, teleworking by moving to Pierce County, we're, we're seeing that trend, so, um, as we go through this, I just, I want us to have that in the back of our mind, and I am in no way saying that Gig Harbor needs to accommodate those people, but just as a, a general trend, you know, I would see that that could be an amendment to Vision 2050 coming up.
As lo- as long as they amend Sound Transit budget with it. Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, this is Bob Heinz again, the, I, I have to ask, how did Department of Commerce come up with their number? If you didn't have a buildable lands report, uh, and you mentioned that as being the big issue in Gig Harbor undercalling their growth heading into Vision 2040, I guess it was, okay, or 2030 or both, 2040, I guess it would have been, and it, it begs the question, how, how did they come up with that number? And, uh, be- because it's going to run, it's going to run right into my argument big time, um, and that is, we grew well beyond our target, and we consumed buildable land doing that, okay? So, this idea that you, you're, you, you start all over again is, is troubling, okay? Without some recognition of the fact that we did consume quite a bit of land, overshooting our 2030 calendar year point on the Vision 2040.
So, just a very short, brief, hopefully succinct answer to that is, the OFM gave a lower, um, a lower amount of growth to the city of Gig Harbor, for its last comp plan, to grow over 20 years for 3,600 people, and these are, I'm just roughly saying that, the memo describes the actual numbers, um, somewhere along the lines of either looking at capacity or how, um, development agreements, for instance, were effectuated, decisions may not have been looked at in terms of how they were going to affect the comp plan in general, um, somewhere along the line, there was a breakdown in, uh, in the comp plan maintaining consistency with the zoning code and with our planned growth. So, it is what it is, I, I, you know, but we, we are here and you are correct, we don't, we don't get extra credit or under credit for going over, what happens is, we have to start anew, as Carl's memo describes. So, although starting anew, as is described in the memo, does not mean that we're going to grow at 5.9% or even 2.8%, and as you'll see in here, staff is recommending a significantly reduced growth, annual average growth rate of somewhere between 1.3% and 1.7%, and, um, not to take all of Carl's thunder, sorry, but, you know, we acknowledge, um, what has been done recently within the code to, you know, reduce density and to increase slot sizes, et cetera, we also acknowledge several other things in this memo, and so you're not going to see staff recommending a 5.9% rate, or even a 2.8, we think somewhere in the range of 1.3 to 1.7 or 1.6 can accommodate the pop line, pipeline, uh, as well as any, you know, available capacity with, uh, for development within the buildable land report.
Okay, uh, this will be a topic of future discussion, I'm sure. Uh, uh, and that is, once we see the buildable lands report, and we understand how far whatever the number is being proposed is, uh, consistent with that buildable lands report, uh, to me, that will be the, uh, the telltale, um, argument, that, that's the one I think that will win, it should win the day, in the world of, of, uh, density and growth, I'm not sure rationale wins, but, uh, uh, it, in my mind, that would be the dominant theme, that is, it would have to be in some way consistent with buildable lands, okay? And, um, in fact, that, that's a good question, in the, the consistency with buildable lands, can they give you a target that exceeds your buildable land that you have right now, and just say, "Go annex and stuff"? How, how does that work?
So, buildable lands is a look-back report, the buildable land report does not allocate population or employment, it does not, um, provide density, it's just a, a snapshot in time of what is currently available for development, either vacant or underutilized, and prints an assumption on that, um, so, you know, it's important, as we talked about in other meetings, to continue to separate those two things, the buildable land report provides us one piece of information, the, the target and the growth setting is, um, they're, they're kind of two totally separate processes, uh, within this, we don't get to look at our urban growth areas for either, uh, meeting or exceeding our population, if we were to annex, I won't say any specific area, because I don't want to, anyway, if we were to annex a large piece, a large area, we would be taking their existing population, but we would also be taking in any employment or residential capacity, so in terms of the UGAs, they don't, they don't factor in right now to this discussion at all, it's simply apples-to-apples, city limits, and then part of that is looking at that geography, through the buildable land report, it tells us what our growth rate has been, um, over the time period, what we currently have capacity for in terms of population and employment, and then what we're doing now is the looking forward, so once we know what we have in our geography, how many new folks, how many new jobs are we going to put into that geography over 20 years? And as annexations happen, you know, people will be added, subtracted jobs, et cetera.
Okay, I'm going to have, it's going to take a while to assimilate that, but, uh, Councilmember Franch, you had a question, and then I would request that we return to, uh, Carl DeSimis's presentation, otherwise it's going to take a forever to get through this. Well, yeah, and I, I guess I'll, I'll let him finish, because this, I mean, and unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to really review this much today, but there, this is some, to me, this is some of the most critical things that we're going to, we're talking about for the quality of life for Gig Harbor, and, uh, so I'll, I'll let him finish, and then I'll come back, because obviously, what you can see there at the top of page three, I'm assuming there is, uh, some scary stuff. Yep, I agree. Okay, Carl.
You know, acknowledging that we did not get the memo out in advance of this, we would just, again, like to go over all the information, and we anticipate you'll want to review this memo in conjunction with the HBL memos, and then come back on the 17th for a really in-depth Q and A with the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Katrina, I was about to say that as well, um, uh, so, well, let me, let me see where, where I left off here, so the, the, the beginning of this memo is really a lot of background information, um, a lot of stuff that you've, you've kind of already heard, um, talking about regional growth strategy, Vision 2050, what the regional geographies are, um, and leads into, uh, a discussion here, again, talking about the Commerce Grant, uh, the fact that this is draft information at this point, even after it goes to Commerce, uh, we fully expect the city will have opportunity to make changes to these, uh, to the draft targets, uh, to really hone in on them, to do more analysis, uh, have more discussions like this one, uh, and really get to something that's, uh, com- comfortable for, uh, the city of Gig Harbor and its citizens. So, the next section gets So the next section gets into some of the background numbers on what has, what has happened, what we were originally planning for out to 2030, 10,500 total. That was based on our base year population in 2008 of 6,900. So we saw, so the growth that we were looking for was about 3,590. What we actually got between 2000 and 2020 was an average annual growth rate of about 2.8%. And we had, as Katrina was talking about earlier, we had a spike between 2014 and 2020, right after the Great Recession, that went up to about 5.9%. So where we landed in 2020 was 11,240, and so we saw this increase of 4,617 people over that span compared to the 3590 that we were targeted for out to 2030. Doing some quick calculations, if we were to continue that 2.8% from now out to 2044, we'd be looking at a 20, we'd be looking at 21,800 people in the city. Now, that's, of course, all things being equal, you know, not taking into account any economic anomalies or, you know, annexations or any of that, any of the like. So, you know, that's just real, just kind of straightforward math. So we'd be seeing that increase of about 10,005 people. Obviously, so reason, as I said earlier, the Cities and Towns Regional Geography has been allocated 18,535 people. So for something like that to happen is obviously very unrealistic. You know, other jurisdictions would be in the same boat with those, with, uh, with their, uh, annual, average annual percentages as well. And so we would be blowing that number out of the water. So obviously, it's not, it's not realistic to continue in that. So we need to, what we've been saying, we need to bend that trend. So the next section talks a little bit about the persons per household, which was a factor that we all keyed in on when we discussed this previously. Currently in 2020, we have 5,300 units or so in the city. Those are single family or just residential units, not necessarily single family, but residential units. And with 11,240 people, just again, doing some simple math, that would be approximately 2.12 persons per household currently. We were previously under, we were, previously, it was assumed that we were at about 1.8 or 1.86 persons per household, leading up to 2020. And so we, staff has, has done a lot of thinking about this, and I know we had some discussions with the Planning and Building Committee about this as well. And we don't feel that that is, um, a, you know, realistic number for the city of Gig Harbor, just based on demographics and what we're, you know, what we're actually seeing on the ground with a lot more single-family residential homes being built over the last decade or so. So while some other, while most of the other jurisdictions in the Cities and Towns Geography are actually reducing their persons per household from 2020 out to 2044, we are recommending that we increase it by 0.08 to 2.2 for this planning period. And we'll, I'll just note here that this effectively means that, uh, that more of the city's assumed population would be accommodated in fewer dwelling units. So that's kind of the idea behind it. So as noted before, uh, we were at 2.8 with that spike of 5, 5.9%. And we don't feel, we feel that those rates are way too aggressive going forward. And so we've tried to present a range to provide sort of a real, what we feel is a realistic view of what growth should look like in the city limits out to 2044. And so what we've provided is, uh, average annual growth rate assumed using our base population of 11,240 at 2020. And then looking at what that total population would be out to 2044 and what the increase would be over the base year. So total population minus the base year getting to this number. And that's based on these annual growth rates. So sort of looking at, you know, a realistic view, uh, but in a range. So what we can't forget in all these discussions is that we do have a pipeline already. So we have, you know, roughly 500 dwelling units that could be constructed over the next few years. We've either had, uh, you know, they've either have pre-application, uh, pre-application meeting, they've maybe had preliminary plat approval, or they're in, you know, in discussions. So, you know, look, we have to, we have to keep in mind that we, that those are hanging out there. If we assume the 2.2 persons per household, then we're already looking at, you know, 1,100 persons roughly relative to the pipeline. And so it's not in addition to what we've already proposed. This is just getting absorbed into it, but it's something that has to be kept in the back of our minds that that's, uh, that's coming. The next section-
If I made the, sorry to interrupt, but the pipeline, and this is something Carl and I have talked about, and I alluded to it a little bit, uh, earlier in the presentation, that we are currently in May of 2021. And so the 500 unit approximate pipeline that we have is as of right now. There is many other projects that have not yet received approval and are going through the process. So this pipeline is going to continue to be refined, uh, and refined and becoming more final as we get closer to the comp plan. But this gives us a good estimate of where we are right now with projects that are actually in with applications that are in some form of approval.
The next section gets into just a, a snapshot of, uh, our sort of rationale for the numbers that are being proposed for council's consideration. And, you know, we'd like to note here that, um, you know, the buildable lands report is still, is still coming. You know, where we can learn more about vacant, underutilized parcels, capacity and inventory analysis will be coming along with that. County has already released data forms to this point. And Councilmember Himes and I spoke about that the other day, but we, but we don't have the capacity and inventory number, so we really can't inform the assumptions in those data forms. And so we have the rest of the, the rest of the report. And in talking with planners at Pierce County, that, that should be coming anytime. They're really just waiting on their GIS department to, to finish working out the data. So once we have that, that'll be very helpful. As I understand, that's going to be released in GIS format, and so it will be, uh, really easy to analyze spatially, which is always helpful when you're trying to do these sorts of things. So really looking forward to seeing how that, how that comes out, what it looks like. And so finally, we, we just ask, we're just asking for a recommendation from the Planning and Building Committee on these, the average annual growth rate, uh, so that we can move forward, at least at this point, in, um, in, in participating in the draft report that will go to Commerce from the county. And as we've said, we'll have a lot more opportunity for discussion going forward. And we will be able to really hone in and analyze the numbers and get to something that's comfortable for everyone. The, the other two documents that I've provided here are, one that you've seen before, I believe, this, this is the project memo that came out from HBL. I'm not going to go through these next two. They're really provided for council's information as you're going through the, the memo and, and thinking about all of this. This first one from HBL lays out the, um, the process and the procedures that were used by HBL to come up with their numbers and their rationale and their assumptions. The second document is, finally, this came out in March. This is from PSRC. This is their guidance for growth targets to implement Vision 2050. This has some really good information, really good data and background in it. Down at the bottom of the document, um, after you get through all of the graphs and background information and everything that's, that's useful, we have this guidance for aligning growth targets, which has some really interesting information in it, mostly background, but it informs the process quite a bit. Uh, and after that, um, it provides some regional growth strategy policies from Vision 2050, which are, which are very interesting to read, again, providing more background. Uh, and then some regional growth strategy actions follow that, which are also really, really good read, really good background for you. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Chair.
Councilmember Himes, unmute.
I'm, okay, I should be unmuted now. Councilmember Franch, you had your hand up.
Yes. So in this memo that you have here, Carl, you talked about, um, May 19th is the next meeting?
That's, that's correct, Councilmember Franch. That's the next meeting for the Cities and Towns Regional Geography. So we had a meeting recently, um, in, uh, when was it, late April? And it was decided at that meeting that we would meet again in May to try and come up with, um, try and agree on the draft and the initial target allocations.
Right, and, and it, that's what it said in there that, I, if you could go, go down a page so I can get the exact language that you have here.
Yep.
Right there.
Right here.
There you go. Yeah. So to, it says towns will be meeting on, again, on May 19th to agree on final draft population allocation figures, and then talking about a June 30th date there. So is that a? How tied in are we going to be getting on May 19th?
Well, I can't say, when you say tied in, do you mean how final are we going to be getting?
Yes.
Well, again, these are, these are meant to be draft population allocations. I mean, that's, that is what I am being told every time I ask the question. Uh, and again, I'm trying to get them to give me something more concrete in writing that really spells that out so that it gives your, not just us, but all jurisdictions, uh, some, you know, better confidence that that is true. But again, they are, the Pierce County is, is under the gun to get this, a draft report to the Department of Commerce because they're working under the guidelines of a grant to get this work done. So they're, they are, they are forcing our hand a little bit to come up with this draft allocation earlier than, than we would like. But again, it is just a draft number that we have to give them so that they can put something into the report, so Commerce has something to satisfy their guide, their, uh, their grant guidelines.
Well-
We are, we're actively seeking, uh, something in writing from Pierce County. Carl is through his, uh, through the senior planner, and as soon as we get that in writing, we're going to pass that on to the committee about that these are drafted and subject to change legally and procedurally, even if we say, let's say, 1.3% and then the buildable land report comes out, uh, or the data comes out and it's not, you know, we don't have as much capacity as we thought, uh, we can still modify that legally, um, under our, our rights through the Growth Management Act, uh, up until our comp plan is, um, beginning. So, you know, this again is working toward a, a, a grant deadline for Pierce County, but we will still have plenty of opportunity to amend this post this May 19th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm glad we're having the meeting on the 17th, uh, so after we all can get a chance to digest all this important information today. Uh, so I just got two more quick questions, then I'll just hold off for a while. So was there any census data used in relation to the persons per household?
Yes, so the persons per household, the OFM does small area estimates that, uh, basically takes into account, um, smaller geographies. And what they found during, uh, looking at the city in advance of the 2020 census was that our, um, our persons per household had increased. There was a little dip, um, looking at the geography as a whole, and that was because at that time, there were many single-family residences in the Harbor Hill Development Agreement area that were vacant at that time. So they just hadn't had people move in yet. However, the trend shown by OFM, and again, this was not census data, but it was information utilized, um, in support of the census, did show, uh, an increase in our persons per household. And that goes with the trends that we're expecting to see in our 2020 census information, trending towards younger households, more households with, um, children attending elementary school, et cetera. That is backed up by data from the school district, and so we feel very confident in recommending our 2.2 persons per household.
Right, I mean, how comfortable would you feel on a even higher number than 2.2? I mean, 2.2 is like a half, you know, a married couple and a half of a child. I mean, that's, I mean, I, I would think, and, and maybe Councilmember Markley can comment on her neighborhood, I would think the majority of people in, in Gig Harbor North area, you know, have at least one child, if not two or more. So, um, anyway, that's just, and, and I don't want to monopolize because I know we're getting short on time. So, um, is it, when it gets back to the, the buildable land report? I thought we were the ones that were, were doing, is Pierce County doing the buildable lands report, or is the city?
Pierce County.
With the input that we gave, uh, two or three meetings ago?
We've been giving input for over a year now, um, in terms of our, um, our GIS data, our development data, our densities, um, and our assumptions. Pierce County is collating those, and they have the GMA obligation to be responsible for the cost of doing so.
Okay, and when is that coming out?
We don't know when the actual report will come out. The, um, the capacity and inventory analysis is the next step. That's the next piece that should be coming out soon. Uh, and I know they've got, uh, they have, uh, buildable lands report in draft, I think, at this point. But they'll be working on finalizing that after the capacity and analysis, a capacity and inventory analysis data comes up.
And staff will not feel comfortable giving a final recommendation of an annual average growth rate until we see the draft buildable lands capacity information.
That, thank you very much, because that was going to be my next point, that that, this is putting the cart before the horse of, without the buildable lands report, we're just having, talking about a lot of subjective things. So lastly, because I see everybody's got their hand up, i- i- at the bottom of Carl's memo, he, he wants a recommendation by the committee today, um, on a growth percentage. I, I think it would be wise for us to hold off until we make that recommendation, until the meeting on the 17th.
I agree. I think that that was our intention, was that the general, uh, the general request to the committee is for a recommendation, not necessarily today. And if I could quickly, you did hit on a really important item, Councilmember Franch, and so for the edification of the rest of the committee, the 2020 census data, if that comes out prior to us, if we are able to receive draft census data that shows a higher persons per household than 2.2 of what we're assuming, we will definitely make a different recommendation. But for right now, we can, um, 100% back up with data, um, a 2.2 rate, which is, again, much higher than our 1.86 prior. However, if we do find that we are higher than 2.2, we'll make adjustments at that time.
The here, Councilmember Markley, I think you were next in line, and then I'll go to Mayor Cume.
I think the mayor was ahead of me, but, um-
Go ahead. It's your committee meeting.
I was just gonna answer Councilmember Franch's, uh, question. You know, in our neighborhood, it's, it's a mixture, actually. We have a lot of families with kids, but we have a lot of people who bought in this neighborhood to have it be their retirement home. And it's just the husband and the wife, and they bought it to retire in, and they bought the larger house so that their grandkids could come and visit. You know, that's why they, they wanted the extra space for their retirement home. And then a lot of these floor plans have a master or, or a large bedroom on the bottom floor with a full bathroom, and so they're able to use it as a, as a home to age in. And so it really is a mixture. Um, I, I would say there are more families- I would say there are more families with young kids than there are retired couples, but not by much. I mean, it's really, really kind of split in, at least in my neighborhood. I don't know about Har- Harbor Hill seems to just be full of children, full of children. And, you know, and we do, we have a lot of children in our, in our neighborhood as well, but a lot of them are getting older, going off to college. In fact, I feel like half our neighborhood kids went off to college this last year. So then you're left with, you know, maybe one other high schooler or middle schooler left in the house. So mine seems to be a little bit of the older crowd, you know, in the neighborhood. And, and Harbor Hill seems to be a little more younger families. But it is, it is very, very split between retired and and young families.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Kuhn.
Yeah. So I've seen that. Even in my neighborhood, we had people that bought a house to retire, but I've also seen many of them over the last 20 years, their plans changed, and then they ended up selling that house because they ended up not coming here and retiring, just because their own personal plans. So a, a question and then a comment. When you say that we were accommodating less dwelling units, what do you mean by that? There, there's more people in less dwelling units.
So when we look at a persons per household assumption, when you look at a 1.8, if you're assuming that only 1.8 people are going to live in a house, then you would need more houses to accommodate your population. If more, if more people are living in an individual home, you would need less houses overall.
Well, that's where the 2.2 went up, and that's why that's, okay.
Yeah. And I, I know it looks like a a minor adjustment, but in terms of, this is one of the demographic really interesting things for nerds like me in terms of data, is looking at our population and how it's getting younger, and then how that's relating to these assumptions. Because really, we were a, and we still are a retirement area, but we also, as Councilmember Markley and Franch and Mayor Kuhn were talking about, we're seeing an influx of families, which compared to 2008 is drastically different. Our demographics look different.
What I would like to see, and I believe most of the, the council committee here would agree, is I'd like to see how staff can figure out how we can show a reduction in the amount of people going into these plans. Because what we've got here is we're exceeding the amounts that we already have set forward. And, you know, PSRC and PCR, they're all wanting us to, they want the cities to accommodate all these people. And, you know, we've all said that we shouldn't have to sacrifice our cities to accommodate all these people. Then, you know, the county, granted, they don't want the county to, but our UGA is just going to move. And, you know, down the road in the next 40 years, we're going to adopt UGA, we're going to have no new UGAs. And the county's going to get encroached on anyway. But right now, we're, we're exceeding the growth targets that are already out there. And I think we need to figure out, and I think we have a, you know, we, we have reasons why we can say, you know, we're, we're, we're already exceeding, you know, our 2030, we've already passed it, or thereabouts. And it's just going to happen. It's going to, again, so I think we, I think we all want to see how we can reduce the amount of people because it's just going to be more. And one thing that we're talking about is buildable land. Well, you know, one thing I've talked about already a lot today is density. And right now, developers are looking at our land, and they're, they're not looking and saying, oh, there's a house on this lot. We, it's, it's not buildable, it's already built. They're looking at how much that lot, how much that 900 square foot house is worth in Millville. And it's worth a million dollars. And now we, now it's better to tear it down and build four units. And that's, that's, that's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about the density coming to areas that are already built, but the land's become so valuable, it's not just buildable, it's, it's new development. So I think we, we got to reduce these numbers somehow. And I think most of this committee would agree that we don't want to shoot high because we're going to get there anyway.
Councilmember Heinz, if I, could I make a couple of remarks to that?
Okay, yeah.
I think definitely, and again, Mayor, I understand, we just sent this memo out before the meeting, but I, I think as the committee members are reading this, we are not, again, recommending even a 2.8 growth rate, which was the previous. We're, we're recommending a much lower growth rate, nowhere near the 5.9 that we've been seeing here in the, in the recent eight years, or a 2.8 even during the recession. What we want to be able to do, and why we have a range, again, and not a recommendation, is we know that we have to accommodate the pipeline and the undeveloped properties that the mayor was just talking about. I do know as well that the mayor, we've had discussions about some targeted up zones for affordable housing in certain areas. And so we don't want to lock ourselves in to not be able to do some of those kind of more, more affordable mixed-use projects by going with a number that is too low. But essentially, on the other side, we hear from our citizens and from our council members quite often that the growth rate is just, has been just too much for our city to handle. So, you know, there, there's a lot of things to consider. I think the memo does a great job of explaining the growth and the rate that it did happen, and the reasons for the reduced rate that staff is now recommending. So I do look forward to the committee having a chance to read the, read the memo, the HBL memo, and answer further questions on the 17th.
Okay. I, I've got my hand up, and I'm, I guess I'm going to utilize it. A couple of questions. One, the base year again for this 2044 is what? Is it 2020 or is it 2024? Where's the starting point?
For the, for the data that, that we're looking at here, the starting point is 2020.
Okay.
But for our comp plan, it'll be 2024. So as Katrina said earlier, we're going to have to adjust at that point anyway, even after all of this work is done, and we get into looking at our comp plan updates. We're probably going to have to adjust this again to make sure that our, our land use assumptions in the city are consistent. And also that our zoning is consistent with those land use assumptions. So at that point, you know, we're, we're back to kind of looking at all of this again, and there could be, there could be need at that point for us to go through a reconciliation process with the county in order to make changes to what will by then probably be adopted by ordinance. And so there's, again, as we've been saying, there's really, there's still a lot of work left to be done on this. And Pierce County, again, they, they're, they're working under the guidelines of this grant from Commerce, so they're kind of moving faster, I think, than most are really comfortable with. And you know, particularly since most of us are going to be going through a periodic update in our comp plans, coming up here in the next year, two years.
And for, Councilmember Heinz, to add on to that, the, the sister counties with us that are also on the same timeline for periodic reviews, King, Kitsap, Snohomish, those three counties are just now beginning to look at the population target setting, whereas this process was started in 2020. So you know, not to beat a dead horse, but again, it goes to why, looking at this population and target setting, it, it behooves us to do this closer to when the actual base year of the plan is. So as Carl mentioned, there will need to be amendments to this made as we proceed forward to the periodic update.
Okay. Across all of the Pierce County cities and towns, which is the category that we're in, I think you mentioned an 18,000 resident increase was the magic number, somewhere around that line.
18,535.
Yeah, that's it. If you take that and divide it by the current population of those cities, what, what, what kind of a percentage do you come up with, okay, in terms of what collectively we have to get to? And, and by the way, the reason I'm asking the question, this is the top-down mentality at its extreme, and I'm sure that's exactly what's going on right now. Above us, okay? If they don't know the details, working from the bottom up, like buildable lands and that, they've got to be making some very interesting assumptions coming down, okay? Somehow, and, and, and it, it's a good number to know. So that's one thing I'd like us to look at.
Yeah, we can pull that from the HBL spreadsheet, Carl. We can pull the population and send that to the committee.
Yeah.
I can get that.
The, the second one, and, and this is a, it's an interesting dilemma when we're in here. It reminds me of some of the poker games I've been in. What, what's intriguing here is nobody knows the real number because we don't have buildable lands report. We don't know that much. They don't know much. We don't know that much yet. And it seems to me that our strategy should be to go low going in. And the reason I say that, trying to reduce a target after somebody thinks it's been preliminarily set is usually a rough road. But if you come back and say, well, guys, you know, we, we sharpened our pencil a little bit here, we've got some breaks on the number of residents per, per number of bodies per household, that type of things, buildable lands report. I, I guess what I'm saying is it's easier to adjust up than it is to pull down, even if you've got bulletproof data, okay? And by the way, when, when the real decision comes, we should have real data, okay? And it seems like at that point, we'll know one way or the other. My fear is that they go running, somebody goes running, and they will, they'll go running with a fictitious number and say, wow, you guys committed to this, or committed to that. Of course, we'll argue, oh, no, no, you didn't, you didn't read the asterisk and all that. Just to get out of that whole thing, put the burden of proof on them to bring us up. Okay, right now, we're, we're going the other way, called, if we go high, and then we're going to have to, to, to argue, go through all kinds of rationale, arguments, et cetera, blah, 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 to bring it back down. I'd like to put the, put the shoe on the other foot here a little bit. So that's my thinking. That may be a little Machiavellian, but I'm, I'm really amazed that this thing comes down from the heavens and the driver is a grant. And, and somehow the cities are left with the prop wash of this whole thing, okay? That, that troubles me, to be quite honest. So that's my thinking. It would be go low deliberately. And when we get the buildable lands report and we get the real household, the number of residents per household number, the final number, then we'll be in, in a much better position to go up versus to try to pull it back down. Enough said. Let's see, Councilmember Markley, I think you were next.
Councilmember Franch was first.
Okay, boy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Has anyone asked Commerce for an extension on this grant?
I, I can't answer that, Councilmember Franch. I'm not, I'm not certain.
Well, I mean, that seems like it would be the wise thing to do rather than try and make a lot of, I mean, we're making a, a lot of assumptions based on incomplete facts. I mean, there's grant extensions that go on all the time. I mean, is that something we could do, or does Pierce County have to do that?
It's Pierce, Pierce County was applied for and received the grant, and they're paying HBL to do the work through that grant.
Would that be a action by the department or by the county council?
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, maybe else, I, well, I, I don't know if I need the blessing to, I mean, send Councilmember Young a request that says, hey, you know, we're kind of getting forced into making some things, some judgments based on incomplete data, and we want you guys to request a grant extension.
Councilmember Franch, I think that Carl could request that from the planner he's working with so that we don't have to elevate it that high yet. We can notify you on their response.
Okay. And my other question is, so it, whatever number we pick for a, a yearly increase in population, what happens if all that gets burned up early in relation to 2044?
So something that, something that's important for us to look at in the periodic update is a comprehensive plan and code mechanism for future councils to look at when considering text amendments to the code, and when considering rezones and area-wide amendments. Something that generally is done in other jurisdictions is if rezone application comes in or a comp plan amendment, it's going to, you know, change what was previously put in the plan, that it needs to go under analysis to see if that development would put us over our target or not. City currently does not have any policy language or regulatory language to stipulate that. So that is something that we would like to put in place for the future so that the checks and balances are there in order to evaluate that. It really does need to be a consideration in those decisions.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Markley.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with that, Katrina. I think that is a good plan for policymaking going forward, to have something put into place like that, because that was one of the things I was going to ask was regarding vacant, underutilized parcels, are, are there specific rules regarding those, the things we have to do, parameters that we work in when we're dealing with those? Is that something that is outlined in any of these documents that you've sent, or something that we could, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not too familiar with, with the process, I guess, of how what kind of control we have over this growth, and what control we have over what kind of land we have to use, what kind of land we don't have to use, how we can rezone things in our favor or not rezone things if that results in being favorable to the city. So I guess, you know, before we would agree on any policy, or even before we agree on numbers, it'd be nice to have a little bit better understanding of what can this, what can the city do as far as protecting ourselves in the way of growth, but also not burying our head in the sand and pretending like growth isn't going to happen, because that's, that's not, that's not good either. We're going to keep growing. That's inevitable. So how do we do that in a smart, responsible way while trying to meet all the expectations of the county, the state, you know, everything else? I mean, you guys have a tough job. I, I just sit and listen to you guys, and I'm like, wow. You know, having to come up with these numbers is almost like shooting an arrow and just hoping you hit the right thing. I mean, it's, it's calculated. It's very, very complex, and you, and you really, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily agree with aiming too low for one of the reasons you stated before. We don't want to get locked out of potential opportunities that might benefit the city or benefit our citizens as far as affordable housing if we shoot too low, but we don't want to go too high either, and then be forced to meet that. So I'm, I'm glad we have another meeting, and I'm glad we have some time to digest some of this. And I may talk to you, Carl or Katrina separately, too, just to get a better understanding of, you know, what can the city do and what can we you know, what can the city do and what can we not do? And then if we need to write some new policy, how do we go about doing that and what criteria do we base it on? So.
Sure. Yeah, we'd be happy to talk to you, Councilmember Markley. The 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 gist of looking at the capacity information and why that's so important is it would give us, when we look at capacity, it's the land based on its current zoning. So what we're, one of the key pieces of information that Carl and I have described here today and also in the memo that we want is the amount of people that can be accommodated on those vacant or underutilized parcels so that we are not undershooting if they were to come in for development. Um, and I say that because if we if we have our number too low, we can't stop the parcels coming in that have development rights to their property, right? Um, uh, so we want to be able to take into account what is our current pipeline, right? What do we have in the permitting system already that we know is going to be developed? The second piece of really critical information that we're just talking about is the capacity information. What do we know based on um current densities and current development against parcels that are vacant and underutilized? How many people would come from that? And that gives us a really good indicator of what our land in the city right now can accommodate without any upzones or any expansions. And so those are two of the very important pieces of information that we need in order to move forward. Um, in evaluating that in the future, for instance, through the comp plan update, if we're going to be looking at land and significantly upzoning portions of land, that would have to be looked at through and likely an EIS process and potentially against these targets. We would not want to adopt a zoning map that would have zoning as such that would that would have a potential for a higher population target than what um we currently have. And so that, those are the checks and balances that uh that Carl and I are speaking to, that we need to keep into control uh or that we need to take into consideration. For instance, if we don't have enough residential capacity left in this bucket, I mean, hypothetical, but you know, that would be a piece of information that a future council would need if at such a time they were considering, for instance, a development agreement that would, you know, double density or if they were in some future considering a um another PRD that density would be doubled for certain things. Um, though the the population associated with those dwelling units and those policy decisions should have been discussed and rectified at the time of approval. And those are some of the things that we want to be able to put policy and regulatory uh language together just to ensure it's not saying that those things couldn't happen, but the information as pertaining to our overall growth as a city needs to be looked at prior to those decisions being made at the policy level.
Okay, anything else? I guess I had my hand up on that same thing on on discussion with Councilmember Markley. If 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 to me, it would be helpful, I believe, for the whole committee to to understand that. Um, and and that's a real key point, I think, is the ability to um monitor and control this. I I've been amazed at the number of things, well, after our big push in 2018, 2019 to slow things down a little bit, and then comes the conclusion that that we got development agreements, PRDs, MUDs, PUDs, you name it out there that are 10 years old that are just now coming to light, okay? Uh, everything from the courtyard, the the Scancy, um Scancy Courtyards, um Harbor Winds, uh North Creek, I go right down the line. The ability to control particularly on the on limiting the upside. Um, boy, I'll tell you, once the cat's out of the bag, it's going to be based on what I've seen. It's extremely difficult to do that in a timely manner, particularly when somebody's got a legal document in their hands that says, I can build this preliminary plat, uh, a development agreement, I go right down the line in terms of what I think um are the issues out there today that keep proliferate proliferating um higher density neighborhoods in many, many cases um that don't agree with the current zoning at all, but it doesn't matter because they're they're grandfathered in. So I I think it would be worthwhile to have that discussion called what what can we do? Um, and and by the way, is it is it is it better? Is it easier to control going down or going up? And I would think it would be much easier to ring the bell and say, okay, we've just increased the density uh allocation to these zones, and I'm sure that we'd have a rush of developers uh coming to the party, and none of them would have to have their old document in their hand, their grandfather document. They'd say, oh, yeah, I want the new one, okay? And I've got a new platform, preliminary plot, nothing for it. That's just my view, okay? I'm I'm speculating here. But it seems to me it would be much easier to promote growth than it would be to slow down growth. Okay, Councilmember Franch.
I I agree with that, by the way, Councilmember Heinz. Um, I guess, well, you know, I, one of the words, well, there's several words that really bother me, but this underutilized word is one that really bothers me. And when when somebody's making an analysis at the county of underutilized land, uh, are they looking at like, you know, you got a house that's sitting on one acre. Um, are they viewing that if the R1 zoning is four, that the deficiency is three units?
They'd note a deficiency, Councilmember. I would need to look at the uh methodology to determine if it would be a minimum or if they were going on a max. But a a single home on an acre would be flagged as underutilized. I'll have to get back to you on exactly what that assumption would be.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, that was a uh a long but worthwhile, I think, discussion. Um, and it looks like we'll all be looking to this gathering on the 17th. And I guess I would also like to get some um some wisdom from that meeting as to, I think, the PCRC is on the 20th, if I remember correctly. Uh, it's the third Thursday typically uh of the month. I think that should be about right.
Yeah, Councilmember, we'll try to find or uh we will, as we get additional data from Pierce County, Carl and I will continue to refine the memo that was provided today and provide any additional information prior to the 17th.
Okay, that'd be great. That would be great. Like I said, I have brought this issue up. The overachieving in one in one uh period of time and then uh not getting credit for that going into the next one. So I'll leave it at that. Okay, Councilmember Franch, you got your hand up again.
Yeah, this is on a uh, are are you, are we finished with this topic? This is an unrelated question.
Uh, I guess, Carl, you'll have to answer that. You're the kind of directing the content here.
Uh, I I don't have anything else, Councilmember Heinz, so we've, I think that was a really good discussion. Really appreciate all the feedback. I've taken some notes. Uh, we will get you the information uh that you requested and or, as Katrina said, we'll be including it um in another memo uh or refining this memo for the 17th.
Okay, just a question. The the committees that you outlined before, those were in the various categories, cities and towns, um, the ones close to rapid transit. Uh, they got all those different categories. Are those subsets of the uh Growth Management Coordinating Committee?
Uh, they're not necessarily subsets. I mean, most of the people who are representative on those um who are are coming to those meetings are typically typically the representatives who go to the GMCC meetings as well. Uh, and so, and we do discuss and have discussed this topic at GMCC. Uh, HBL has provided updates at GMCC, so it is a it is a topic that we frequently discuss at G at Growth Management Coordinating Committee, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we're up to the second agenda item, the Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Annexation Analysis Updates. And Carl, you're the man.
Thank you, Councilmember Heinz. Uh, this is just a really brief update uh to let you know that we uh have chosen um two consultants to work with the city uh on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Update, uh which also includes the culture and arts element creation. Uh, so that's going to be done under one um one contract with one consultant. Uh, and we've also chosen a consultant to work with on the annexation analysis uh this year in order to prioritize potential uh annexation areas. Uh, so uh Burke Consulting out of Seattle uh is who we've chosen for the um annexation analysis and SDJ Alliance, who's kind of from all over Washington, uh is the consultant we've chosen for the other. Uh, and those those uh professional services contracts uh will be coming to council uh at the next council meeting.
Okay, th- those are on the consent agenda, correct?
I believe I believe they are, Councilmember Heinz, yes.
Because they're within budget and all that. Okay, great.
Correct.
Any any questions on that from Councilmember? Oh, yes, Mayor Q.
Yeah, they're on my desk right here. Um, that's the one question I ask Carl to get back on the wages. Um, looking through the annexation study, I mean, just went through the 40 pages on it or 38 pages on it. I don't see, I don't see how, you know, I don't see how we're going to get done. Now, granted, um, it takes us through 2022, but starting in May, we're we're doing a public outreach. Um, it's got the whole timeframe, you know, starting in May, a public outreach, June, a public outreach. Again, um, I know this is important to, I I know it needs to be done. It's important. But looking through the next year and I don't know how we're, I I can see 2022 maybe, but I don't see how they're going to be able to work on the next two to three months that is outlined um under COVID. Um, so is that, can that just be extended? Because again, I see the time, I don't see the, the the survey monkeys don't come towards 2022, and there's going to be a lot more public engagement right right now. And we may, two days from now, we we don't know what the governor's going to say tomorrow. There's a high chance King County is going to go back to phase one tomorrow. So again, um, is that okay that it doesn't happen as far as our Burke would just um let us extend it?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, that's a really good point. Uh, and it's something that we talked to the consultants when we were interviewing them about as well and what their experience has been uh with outreach during uh COVID uh and um, you know, how how they've been handling and how it's been going. What i- in some cases, actually, in most cases, they have told us that they're getting more input and more participation from the public uh by doing the virtual outreach, uh finding that, you know, people are more willing to get on the computer uh and provide uh feedback uh via a virtual open house than they are to actually show up at the civic center and look at boards. So uh, and that that's just to say that I, they, most of the consultants we spoke with feel very comfortable uh with the idea of doing this, uh a project like this during COVID uh and working virtually. And then the second, the second question about the contract and extension, it is, uh, there is a extension clause in the in the contract to allow for the consultant and the city to agree to terms of an extension if that became necessary.
Okay, well, those were great answers, and they were the ones I was looking for, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember.
Screen sharing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot that. I've been looking at the little screens. I apologize. Thanks for reminding me.
Okay, Councilmember Franch. Yeah, is it possible or is it legal, I guess, to find out who the applicants or the people that, I guess, responded to their request for proposals on that annexation study?
What? I don't know the answer to that, Councilmember Franch.
We'll have to get back to you on that, Councilmember.
Okay, well, I I I think that that is absolutely, it it's been one of my number one things. I think we need to get that done this year. It's a critical, absolutely critical um piece of legislation that could come out of this, and uh I I would hate to see this this postponed. Um, and my other question, I guess I'll wait till the end when we're under um comments. Thank you.
We fully expect that the scope of work that's in the contract, Councilmember Franch, is uh and going to the mayor's point as well, um that it is doable within the the timeframe allowed. However, if we're getting to the end and we do need more time, Carl, as Carl stated, there is a an extension clause that we can work out, but we fully intend to have the report finalized by the end of the year.
Okay, anything else on conference or plan amendments and annexation analysis?
So question on that, the annexation contract basically, um, let's see. No, you're right. Takes it to the end of the year. Okay. Okay, I thought it was 2022. Okay, good.
Okay, any other comments on agenda item number two? Great, we'll move on to agenda item number three, council comments. If there's any left, I think we've made all of them and then some. Okay, but Councilmember Franch, you 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 can always come up with something. Great, you're you're on.
I'll take that as a compliment, Councilmember Heinz.
It is. So, you know, I I can't even really remember the context of where I read this discussion or heard this discussion, but how, and I guess this is for Katrina, how important is it or could it lead us into unintended consequences if our zoning map and our comprehensive map aren't in alignment?
Good question, and there are instances where the zoning map and the comprehensive plan map are not consistent with each other. Uh, I have to not give legal advice over this meeting. Um, so yes, there are known instances. We are um the instances that we.
If you'd like to defer the answer to this to a later date, I I completely understand.
Um, the instances that we're aware of were done through a proper uh comp plan process that did not if change the implementing zoning. And so the the ones that we're aware of that have, that went through a comprehensive plan amendment process for an approved comp plan map, those were done legally, and they would have need to have been challenged within 60 days. So that is deemed, any of the comp plan map amendments that have been done are um valid, and we would not be in legal hot water for. Those are some things that we as staff would recommend that we correct at minimum during the periodic review so that we have in all instances zoning that matches the comp plan. But um it's not an urgent item that the city needs to undertake right now.
Okay, uh, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Markley.
Thank you. Yeah, just real quick, I just want to say thank you again to staff. This is really, this is really helpful. This is um, this is not a a subject that is easy to understand, and there's a lot of moving parts. And so thank you for breaking it down for for councils to be able to just kind of wrap our brains around what all of this means. thank you for breaking it down for, for councils to be able to just kind of wrap our brains around what all of this means and what it means for now, what it means for the future, you know, because it's it's really important how we go forward with this. So thanks again very much for all your efforts and looking forward to the meeting on the 17th.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, any other comments? Great. I think we have come to the end. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.